Welcome to the 7th of July Commissioner Meeting. Y'all say the Pledge Allegiance with me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we've approved the minutes. The June 23 meeting, the accounts payable vouchers and the payroll dockets. Need a motion to accept them?
We've approved the minutes from the 23rd of June meeting, the accounts payable vouchers, and the payroll docket as presented.
I second that motion. More discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye. And up we have Susan. She's out there.
Sorry, I either can't hear you. You guys are really quiet. I thought I was in the wrong building.
We're being sneaky.
You're so quiet.
We're sneaky tonight.
Well, thanks everyone for letting me come and speak with you and give you an update on Girls Inc. I think you have the packet that I sent you, so I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. 2020 to 2022, we are finally starting to kind of see what the new world is going to look like after COVID. Our numbers are starting to creep back up again. COVID, our membership with everybody staying home was very different than it was prior to COVID. But this summer is very, very busy and busier than last summer, so we anticipate that we'll continue to grow. Couple of new things this year. We do have a new partnership with Commons. So we have volunteers coming to Girls Inc. to do STEM programs with the girls. In fact, there was somebody there today doing a STEM project with them. So we're really excited about that. We have a new partnership with the Y in Switzerland County. This has nothing to do with funding from Jefferson County. However, I just want to let you know we're really excited about being able to take Girls Inc. to Switzerland County. And so we're doing a summer program with them. And I'm hoping that we'll be able to do some more programming, but that is completely funded by the Community Foundation of Switzerland County. But we're really excited about that. We have finally navigated virtual learning days, and so we are open those additional days that are now part of everybody's school year. One big thing that came out of COVID that was a good thing is that our Girls Inc. to-go program, and that is taking Girls Inc. STEAM programs and sort of packaging them up into a to-go bag. And girls get those on a Friday. They get to do the activity, they get snack, and they turn it back in on Monday. And for eight weeks, they get to do that program. We did that at Anderson, we did it at Lydia Middleton, Deputy, went out to Deputy, and Rikers Ridge. Prior to COVID, we were set to do that at Southwestern, we were set to do it at all the elementaries, but because of COVID, we weren't, those plans sort of fell through. But we expect that that program is just going to continue to grow. And that's a great way to engage girls who aren't going to come down to our center to be able to participate in programming. So we're excited about that. Our in-school programming that we were doing prior to COVID was paused by the schools. We were told that we would not be doing any of that programming until we got through this last school year. So we're hoping that the new school year, we'll be able to get in and do those programs as well. And this is our affiliate's 15th birthday, so we are very excited about that. And so we're going to be having a celebration in November, so be looking for that. And hopefully you'll join us to celebrate 50 years of Girls Inc. and our community. I think we're very fortunate, whether I worked here at Girls Inc. or not, I think we're very fortunate to have an organization like us in the community. We are requesting for what we used to get from the county. I feel that we are doing programming to merit that. I just want to emphasize the importance of prevention over paying for things after the fact. It's much cheaper on our end. So you can see the budget that I put together, and it's pretty similar. I just asked for some other programming supplies and office supplies to support what we do. So that's just sort of a recap of what we're doing. Hopefully 2022 is going to end bigger and better than 2021, and we're off again. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Appreciate what you do.
Well, thank you very much. And if you have any other questions, just say it and let me know. Or if you need any other information, we appreciate your support. All right, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Aaron Thomas, next victim.
Take it easy on me, will you?
Okay, we'll try.
I'm Aaron Thomas with Lifetime Resources, and you should have received a packet from us. They're, you know, providing a little bit of information as our 2021 annual report, our request letter there. And it also has this page here that has a table that provides you with information about all the different services that we provide. In a nutshell, we are an area agency on aging. And there's an organization like ours that covers every county across the state. We cover five counties in southeastern Indiana, obviously including Jefferson. And the services that we provide are basically aimed at helping people maintain their independence and stay in their homes for as long as possible. That's where they would like to be, that's where they prefer to be. That's also the cheapest option. So you can see there in the letter, you know, the average monthly in-home service care plan cost for us is $365 in comparison to nearly $8,000 in a nursing facility. So the services that we provide are really helping to reduce that Medicaid spend as well. And so a couple of things I want to let you know about. The state is actually transitioning to a managed care system by 2024. So we are very active in that process and making sure that we are advocating for individuals and making sure that, you know, the state keeps in mind that this process has to be easily navigated by these individuals. We don't want to chop it up and cause confusion and things like that. So we're really advocating on the individual's behalf as well as trying to secure our role to make sure that we're able to, you know, contract with those managed care entities to continue providing the services that we've provided for years. We're the boots on the ground, we have the relationships in the community. I feel like we're a trusted source, things like that. So I wanted to let you know about that because that's a big change that's coming up throughout the state. A couple of other things, you know, that have been unique through us for COVID. We offer a host of services, so some of them have been increased and some of them have decreased. So for example, we had to close down our congregant meal sites for a while for obvious reasons. They didn't want older, you know, older adults congregating and, you know, they're the ones who are at high risk. So what we did is we made sure that anybody who was there because they truly, truly need a meal was transitioned to home-delivered meals instead. We touched base with those folks on a weekly basis to make sure that they were still getting that opportunity for socialization and things like that. And then we just paid real close attention to make sure that they, you know, if they needed a referral for other services and things like that, because we weren't really having an eye on them like we normally do, that we got a referral for them. We also started a new program that's called Tea Care, and it focuses on the caregivers for older adults. Because, you know, as you can imagine, people were in their homes a lot more relying on their families, you know, things like that. And the last thing that we want is for the caregivers to get into a position where they're experiencing burnout and, you know, and going downhill themselves. So this is a program that assesses the caregiver's needs and, you know, and focuses on helping them get training and support and things like that that they need. So that's on the in-home services side on our home and community care. We also operate Catcha Ride, and that's been, it's been a tough couple of years for us with Catcha Ride. Our drivers and those that we serve are predominantly those that are highest risk as well. And so we have felt that our biggest thing is to make sure that everybody remains safe. So until April of this year, we were requiring social distancing, which really impacted our availability because we weren't able to fill seats like we normally could and things like that. So if, I don't, you know, I don't know if any complaints have bubbled up or anything like that, but if so, I wanted to let you know that that's the reason why. We just felt like safety was of utmost importance. We're still requiring masking and, you know, screening people before they board and things like that. But we have done away with social distancing because we do feel like at this point, people have had the opportunity to get vaccinated and, you know, things like that. So those are a couple of the things that were specific during COVID. Is there, are there any other questions that I can answer for you? Is there anything you'd like to know about our organization or anything that we're unfamiliar with?
You're probably feeling a crunch now from fuel prices, too.
Oh, yeah. So we've been really fortunate over the last couple of years. We, our organization has received some CARES Act funding, some FFCRA's funding, things like that, that have not required the amount of match that we typically require. So that's what's allowed Catcha Ride to survive because we usually have to have one-to-one match. And so while we've done less trips, we haven't had less expense. We're still running the routes, we're still doing a lot of miles, we're, you know, we still have the fuel expense, the insurance. You know, our costs haven't really, in fact, it's almost opposite. You know, so we're really, really trying to get to a point where we're building that service back up. You know, I think it's difficult, too, because people have the convenience now. Their groceries can come to their house, their prescriptions can come to their house. They can get, you know, virtual health services, which we've helped them do. But at the same time, that then means that they're not getting out, and that can be bad for their health and bad for Catcha Ride. But, you know, so we really want them to get back out in the community. And so we're trying to promote that for their well-being as well as obviously for Catcha Ride's success. So, yeah, it's been tough. There's been a lot of ups and downs. We've been pretty lucky over the last couple of years to get that federal funding, but we're at a point where that's starting to run out now. So our request is for $15,000. Prior to, I think it was 2018, we were getting $16,000. I believe it was, it was cut a little bit in 18 and 19. We got cut to half of that. It was only, we got cut down to $8,000. You know, as you can see here, we're bringing a little over $1.2 million worth of revenue and services to the county. And so what we're asking of you is a little over 1% of that.
I'm sure you have a tough ear like everybody else has.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, it's budget time. Here we go.
Okay, well, thank you. If you have any other questions, feel free to reach out. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, anything like that.
Thank you for what you do.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you for your support.
Lindsay, I believe you are next. Dr. Hostler is right behind you. I know he's retired. John Hostler.
He's here with me. He's here with me. Yeah, he's my backup. All right, I want to head and wrap these. These are letters from Travelers Insurance. They came out and looked at the roof on both the garage and the health department. They said that they would only cover the one side that was damaged on the garage. So that's not going to be our deductible. And if it does, it would barely meet it, so it doesn't seem worth it. I have reached out still to get people to come in and give us some quotes for both the garage and the health department roof. I have only got one quote. It's the one you've got. So if you have somebody in mind, shoot them my way because I've left voicemails of people and I haven't heard back yet. So on, I think it's that fourth paragraph, 1, 2, 3, 4. Fourth paragraph down, it said that the shingles were lifting due to raised nails underneath. And there was some soft roof decking. So in my conversation with him, he was saying that, you know, the roof decking being soft is what caused some of the nail pops and the shingle lifts. But the biggest issue, the biggest concern that he saw with the structure of the roof itself was that he didn't think there were enough vents put in, or the right kind of vents put in, which caused some warping of the boards, so some of that decking is popping. And he, by the way, he made it sound as that it wasn't going to just be stripping the shingles. It's going to require some new decking as well.
Some new shading.
Yes. And it is a 14-year-old roof. It was 2008, so it does have some age on it. One side, I told you guys in the last meeting, I'm just reiterate that one side lost, has significant granule loss, and you can see fiberglass. He highly recommended that we replace our roof within the next two years on the health department. On the garage roof itself, it is older. One side of it is in better shape. I think just the different company putting it in, it has a lot more vents. And maybe the spacing between the rafters was just better. I'm not really sure what's going on there, but it was in better shape. But I would still like to replace both so that we don't have half of the garage roof replaced. So I-
Didn't you have a quote on the garage?
We have a quote for both, from Bumper. And he's the only quote that I have so far because he's, I had someone call, actually the company that put the roof on the first time called and wanted to come out and give a quote. And I said, okay. They haven't showed up yet. And then I left voicemails with three other places, and I haven't heard back from them.
Bumper's the only one you got.
That's the only one I have so far, yeah. So I am hoping to get you guys' approval to replace the garage roof this year because I don't, it has patches that needs to be replaced. And I'm hoping to get your approval to put into the budget to replace the health department roof next year or the year after, if you guys need to talk about it or want to sit and think about it before you decide. I'm not going to put you on the spot right now. But it is something that our insurance company said needs to be done. And moving on from that, I had some news. I just wanted to fill you guys in on some random stuff. So we had some grants ending. We had our COVID. It was supplemental money that we were given from the state to help out with different expenses that we've incurred from COVID. So we were able, since the health department had a lot of traffic, our rugs were shot. We were able to buy new rugs for the entire department to protect all of the new carpet that we've had put in. So we were able to do that through a grant. We were able to do, to get new desks for our nurses. We have two, we have a new nurse and a new clerical, both paid for out of a grant for the next two years. And we were able to buy them both desks. We were able to get a new vaccine refrigerator. One of the ones we had died. So I talked to the state and got our budget reworked for that particular grant. And we ended up getting a new vaccination refrigerator. And then we also got a new filing system. So before we were, when we administer a shot, we've built insurance, if you have insurance. And we get either paid for the shot itself or we get paid for the shot itself and an administration fee. We get an administration fee for everything that we administer. With COVID, we were using software that was provided to us for free by the state. Every health department was using that. And we have since, that had ended, so now we are starting, we've started billing ourselves for that. So we were getting large, what looked like grant revenue coming in as income because it was our reimbursement. So now we're going to just get that on our own as income just through the process, like normal checks that the insurance companies would write us. So that's a new thing for us. It's, we created a lot of paperwork. And I just wanted to kind of fill you guys in on how the software was coming from the state. The state was billing for us. The problem with some of that was that it was kind of falling through the cracks. So if you came in, we weren't going to tell you you couldn't have a COVID shot. So we were going to give it to you. If your insurance fell through, the state didn't tell us. They would just chalk it up to a loss, basically. Now, if you came in with us, now that we're billing ourselves, we're going to ask for your insurance card, and we can bill it directly. And if something, if there's an issue, they're going to contact us and let us know, and we can rebuild it properly. So it should help generate a little bit of an additional revenue as well, just to kind of make sure nothing's fallen through the cracks. We also have a new theater ad coming out. So the Madison 6 Theater had spots open, and that's paid for through our immunization grant. So they reached out and asked us if we wanted to expand our advertisements. So we have an ad that's going to play before every movie that plays at the, yes, at the Madison 6. And then the last thing I wanted to hit on was, so this, one of the new positions that we got with the COI grant, which is a two-year grant where we had, we hired two employees. The nurse that we hired, her title, it's a school liaison nurse. So she works with all the school nurses in the county. She has reached out to every school. Her requirements are that they had to fill out surveys, each school had to fill out like need surveys. And we're going to have to take that information and figure out how we can best help all these school nurses reach more, more students with immunizations in general. COVID really put a damper on people going out and getting the required vaccinations for school-aged children. So this position is supposed to help bridge that gap. So one of the things that we're going to do during the summer, since she can't be in there helping, nurses are working on things too much with them, helping them from our standpoint. And we have contacts at the state that are helping them with the Department of Education. But during the summer, we can't do that. So what we have done is set up times that we're going to be at registration. Not to, we're not going to be giving, it's not going to be a clinic, we're not going to be giving shots. We're going to be in there helping people see their, their, check their immunization records and setting them up for appointments to hopefully get them up to date before they get back to school, which helps us because we actually go into the schools a couple of times a year to try to catch students that haven't had the opportunity to get up to date with their shots. So that is what we have planned for the summer before school starts back.
That's where it can have to be.
Yes. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of a fill-in of how we use some grant money and where we are with some different stuff. I know we haven't really, I haven't really shared that much. Probably a lot of that's new since Tammy's been gone, so. But if you could keep that roof thing in the back of your head and-
That was a shingle roof, right?
It's a shingle roof.
Have you lifted metal? Is metal not an option for those?
I don't see why-
Some of them are like 50-year medals.
I, I think that could work.
Some of them are 50-year medals.
I'm not opposed to it. It's just at this point, I haven't even gotten anybody to call me back.
Oh, Derek Dickerson. It's all you.
Who?
Derek Dickerson. He puts roofs on right and left.
Derek?
Derek Dickerson, yeah.
Okay.
About price on both of them.
Okay. Yep, I will.
Like a 50-year medal.
Okay, got it. Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
Yeah, you want to?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
We're going to go a track here just a little bit.
Yeah, we're going to break a little train here.
I'd like to recognize a county employee. He's been with the county many years, and that's Paul Guiman, our animal control officer. And I was just recently brought to my attention that last month, I believe it was last month, you reunited 13, 14 owners with their dogs-
Right.
-without going back to the shelter and tying all that up.
Right.
And I know you do that because you called me that one time about some pyrenees, remember?
Right.
And I said, maybe over by me, and no, they were from Trimble County.
Oh, I remember that, yeah.
You got those back together, so above and beyond call of duty, so.
Well, I'm just happy to help and, you know, putting those pictures on Facebook. There's a lot of good people out there that share them. And I had two today that went back home, and one of them was, within five or 10 minutes, I had the owner sitting like that.
Right.
So I mean, it's more just me. I love to help, but we've got a lot of good people out there that likes to help, too.
Well, the thing is, you've got that dog in the cage or whatever while you're doing that, so it's not out becoming a pancake, so.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I had the, the one this morning on a leash because it wanted to chase cars. So I put him home, let him till, till his dad come and get him.
Yeah, but thank you for what you do. I appreciate it.
My pleasure. Enjoy.
We do, too, so.
Thanks.
Okay.
Hey, I got a good helper right here.
Yes, you do.
Yeah.
Good reason.
Yep. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
Thanks, guys.
Yes, yes, sir. So that kind of opens it up for, well, no, let's do Troy first. Troy's here. I think Bobby, Bobby won't be here. I rode around with him today. I don't worry.
He's in all.
Oh, is he?
No.
Well, I think he's going to be here. Guess what? You beat him today.
I did. I got to go first, didn't I?
You got to go first.
Just a couple of things real quick. Survive Regatta again, and I know it sounds like a nominal task, but anymore it gets interesting. EMA took on a new role this year, and with that new role, we incorporated some new partners. So I just wanted to recognize those outside of Jefferson County that help us get through and do what we do every year. In addition to our usual help from Jennings County EMA and Clark County EMA, of course, National Weather Service provided meteorologists actually onsite here in Jefferson County for the weekend. So we always appreciate that. But the new folks that, that came to help us was the Federal Aviation Administration and the Federal Air Marshals. Last year, it became apparent that we needed to do something to try and protect, I don't want to call it the airspace, but the, but the, over the crowds, there was a lot of hobby drones and whatnot going around. So we actually petitioned the FAA to put a temporary flight restriction for that type of activity. And they did that, and we advertised it, and we, we put notices out. And we saw the same amount last year that we saw the year before, so it really didn't do a lot of good. So we went back to the FAA, and they said, well, why don't you contact the air marshals? They can, they can support that from an enforcement side of things. So EMA also has some new technology that, where we can detect those. And then the air marshals make contact with those folks who are knowingly or unknowingly in violation of that temporary flight restriction. So that turned out to be a whole issue in itself. But we, we actually contacted like 24 violators of that temporary flight restriction. And I think they were rather impressed that when they clicked past the "fly anyway" screen on their controller, that a federal air marshal walked up and tapped them on the shoulder and said, "Did you not just see that on your controller?" So I think, you know, they were amazed that they could be found that quick. No, nothing other than just education was done. So it was an educational weekend for 24 folks who were flying their drones at Regatta, so. But that, that turned out-
The dog fight the air and you know?
No, 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 the Red Baron wasn't part of theirs, so. But, but it was a very interesting and very technological weekend, and I think everybody learned a lot, so. But anyway, there's new partnerships with the FAA and the air marshals, and we, we appreciate that. We also use some new space with, from the Community Corrections and their area down there for a lot of that, that activity to go on and for us to fly our, our equipment from. And so we appreciate Jason and all his folks down there for hosting us and putting up with us. And we were able to, to share their space with them for the fireworks and their employees that come down. So it worked out well. We appreciate that as well. Just to put it out there on the radar, you know, every week I get the, the US drought monitor report for Indiana. And it's slowly been creeping west, east across the state. Jefferson County, as of the report that came out this morning, was in the, we went from, from none to the, to the lowest level of drought, so it's, it's getting drier as we speak. Typically, we don't do anything with burn bans yet. However, west of us, a lot of the western counties have already started to issue burn bans. So we're, we're going to watch it like we always do. We'll have the conversation when we need to, but just, it, it may be coming unless the weather changes. And speaking of the weather, of course, the heat is a little unbearable the last few days. And with that, those small cell storms pop up with the, with the excessive heat that we've had. So we've had a little bit of damage. We've had some excessive rains. It's been isolated. But we've lost several trees, some of the small buildings. If anybody has any damage, they'd- If anybody has any damage that they'd like to report, they can always do that, but unless we have something widespread or some sort of a major event, there's really not a whole lot we can do other than just help, help refer them to the, to the proper process. But anyway, we're, we're monitoring and keeping our eyes on that as well. Any questions for me?
Sounds good. Just keep it on, keep it on.
Keep it on.
Yep. Thank you, folks.
Thanks, Troy. Bobby Phillips. I didn't think he was going to make it. Thought I wore you out today.
I wasn't sure I was going to make it either. I kept getting further behind. I don't have any major news or updates since we were running, since I did quite a bit last meeting as far as getting everything signed and the documents in order for CCMG application. Luckily, after I did all that, worrying about that July 1st, 31st deadline, they extended that until August 31st. So have a little bit more time to work on that. I have already reached out to our consultant that's working on that and keep it going. Reached out to Ole Mary earlier on my way here to make sure that we were still on their schedule to get their round paving in. And everything else has just basically been business as usual, cleaning up after storms. We've still got some potholes out there we've got to get filled up. I know you guys have been getting a few reports on those. We'll be addressing that here right away also, just some employee and personnel issues. We'll, we'll get them all picked up and get everything taken care of. Do you guys have anything for me?
Good day.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dave Thomas not out there, is he?
No.
Okay.
The only one out here.
You're the only one? All right. Well, that takes care of that part. Public comments? Anybody have anything they'd like to say?
The lady over there.
She's trying.
She's trying.
I don't have a formal request. This is the first time I've had to do this, but I'm representing the Cable Advisory Board. And will I have time to meet with you the next meeting about budget? Yeah, okay. Well, we're trying to hire a coordinator sometime in the near future. And in order to be able to do that, we're going to need more contributions from the different entities in the interloable agreement. So just to give you a heads up, I mean, because in order, I mean, it's so hard to find anybody to work, you have to pay them enough to make it worth their while. So I'll have a more formal presentation for you at the, at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Thanks, you.
Thank you.
Heather, anything?
No, we are going into budget season, so I'm in contact with all the other departments. So we're working on that, finishing up our 2021 audit with State Board of Accounts. And I am getting ready to finally finish up our capital asset management plan that I've kind of been working on. And then after this audit, we definitely have to do it before next time we are audited. So before the end of the year, we have to wrap that up. So I'll be, will be working on that by later half of this year.
Sarah, anything for us? Bobby?
A quick update on the G O meeting we had this morning. The roof is 90% complete and everything else going ahead of schedule. They're working on getting the building closed up as much as possible so they can continue. The weather won't be such an issue to them. Guys have ordered all their materials. They're either ordered or they're on hand in stores. So things are really, really looking well for us. Steel cells are, I think there's one left to be totally completed and stitched down, so they're in good shape in that respect.
Okay.
Animal shelter, I know you said you were out there. The drainage problem's been fixed. The new AC was installed. We could go Friday the 24th. The new fencing is ordered. Bill Barnes, worked with him, Community Foundation, we came up with funding, so things are looking up in that respect. Then the other thing I have to give to you guys, Jerry Horon's working with the local Veterans Board and they want to do a, I guess the best way to do it is show it, it's a bust. It's going to be to honor the men and women who served in the Vietnam War. All gave some, some gave all. It's going to be a brick-type format there. They wanted the county, of course, to support them and to do the, that we would do the benches and the sand brick walkway leading to the memorial. So I wanted to bring that in front of you guys and see what your thoughts were on that,
We're going to do the face and the likeness of Dale Crafton and I don't know anybody, probably if you're from around here, you know who Dale Crafton is. That'll, that'll be really good.
He's the most decorated in Jefferson County. He may even be the most decorated soldier of that era.
Of that Vietnam.
I forget how many flights and sorties he flew, but it's phenomenal because if you know the guy to talk to him, you would never have any idea. He's a very, very humble individual, so, you know, I hope we can tell him we'll support him, so.
I'm pretty sure.
If you guys are okay with that, I'll get back with them and we'll get some more facts and figures in.
Where they won't have it at?
It'll be over here on the, here beside the other, you know, veterans memorials.
Set right in there.
Yeah. Okay. That's all I got.
Is that all?
Yeah.
Mr. Dave, you got anything there?
Uh-uh.
Nothing?
Nothing. Well, there's a, I guess I do have one. The RDA meeting's tomorrow at 10 at Scottsburg. So I think there was some, still waiting on seeing if they'll provide, be able to provide some funds for the airport setting. Still working with that.
I do have one other thing.
Oh.
It's about the shelter. I don't know whether they talked to you about it, about that we would support the no-kill shelter.
Okay.
So basically what that represents is your kill rate is 10% or euthanasia, I'll put it that way. And that doesn't include like, I know this year, they've only had to put down two cats and one dog. They were hit by cars and vented by a vet and there was no, no way forward with any quality of life. So those don't count. This is like the adult male cats and dogs that are adoptable and none of those have been euthanized. So we're way above the no-kill ratio. So I just, yeah, figured for sure you guys were supportive of that, so I just wanted to touch base with that. So right now, we're, we're no-kill, so well, well into the year, so that's it.
Sounds good. I don't have anything. The, the next meeting will be at the Green Road.
Six twenty?
Yep. Six twenty-one or seven twenty-one.
Sixty.
Go this, go this month, seven twenty-one.
Oh, date.
And we'll have the residential treatment train meeting at four before the meeting at five, if anybody wants to come to that. That's that. Anybody else?
Motion to adjourn, gentlemen.
I second that.
All in favor, say aye. I was just checking.